All right. So nine oh three, we'll call the meeting to order. We have roll call, present myself, trustee chair Eugene Dugan.
Trustee Bruce Skiles.
Trustee Steve Barbaugh.
Uh, computer number four.
William Johnston staff.
Bob Perry.
I'm Clausner, board lawyer.
Cynthia Ramos staff.
Byham Wilson staff.
Paul Jacobs, Willis Towers Watson.
And Zachary Paris, Willis Towers Watson.
All right, I think we have everybody. Uh, there's a agenda before you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? All right, there's a motion. Is there a second? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is adopted. We have the minutes from the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty meeting. I have a copy here if anyone likes us to review them. If not, a motion to.
I moved away the reading of the minutes and accept them as is.
The motion passes. Mr. Clausner, I believe you're first up. Is there any updates that we'd like to discuss?
Good morning, all. It's nice to sort of see you. I'll be happy when we can see you all in person. Couple things. Number one, the, we're in the process of wrapping up the division of retirement issue. Because the year is coming to the end and they're still holding chapter money. They issued another final agency action letter this week. And so we'll follow the same response. Uh, I've already been in touch with the lawyers for the division of retirement who said that the submission of the revised actuarial valuation, which we had discussed, will release the money and it will moot all of the cases. But I don't necessarily trust anybody so up there. So that's why we're covering ourselves by filing a response to the petition. Second issue I had, and this is really gonna go to our investment consultant. The Treasury Department, actually the Office of Foreign Asset Control, de-listed a number of Chinese companies. They, it's a bunch of Chinese names, but with no trading symbols released. So I've been in touch with the Council of Institutional Investors who's asked for help and we're all working cooperatively to try to figure out what exactly these stocks are. And um, I, I would assume WTW has got the list. If not, I'll forward it on to the folks there. We had also had in the last month, a a, a new investment that was recommended, Capstone, that was recommended by WTW. And when I read the documents, it basically said it was developed for clients of WTW. So my initial concern was whether or not we had a consultant, whether our consultant was receiving any compensation from the product. And I had been assured in writing yesterday that they do not receive any compensation. This is a product that was developed at their request for their customers, but for which they receive no compensation. There are currently, there's currently litigation involving another very well-known consulting firm up in New York in the federal court up there by the Teamsters Fund saying that, you know, the consultant was actually receiving money for based on its own recommendation. So I thought from a fiduciary standpoint, it was appropriate to ask WTW and they responded forthrightly. That in fact, they received no, no money. I sent along our standard side letter, which if they sign, we're fine with. It wasn't. And of course, we offer no opinion on the appropriateness of an investment. That's really for the consultant to do. And I think that was it. I'm still studying the, uh, the share plan question that came up last month. The one thing that is clear is the share plan ordinance for police refers to members. And our plan defines a member as a person who is employed. So while somebody who had retired in the interim, but for whom a share was earned while they were working, it certainly would be, they were a member at the operative date afterwards. Unless I'm missing something in the reading of the plan, it's intended to be for members. Uh, I will do and I will provide a written opinion, however, as originally requested. And I didn't really have anything else to report. Hopefully it's quiet and I hope all are staying healthy. Any questions for me?
So I, I know, at least I know what the police portion of them what they're, what they would like is to, and, and because remember, there's always that delay in receipt of funds. You know, it's, it's, it's always in arrears essentially. I know their intent is that folks who, who met the membership of the share plan for that year, whether they've separated their service or not, that they would like that distribution to occur for what was earned during the share year regardless of their employment status at the time of the distribution.
I, I think that's right. I think the money's earned based on, on service. The timing of the distribution is not in our control. For example, the state's holding a couple of years' worth of our money. So that's going to necessarily delay the distribution. But it shouldn't have any effect on whether someone leaves the drop plan or, or otherwise retires from our system. So I would say that entitlement is based on the year represented by the distribution and one's employment status during that year. I'm looking now at two dash six oh eight of the code. Uh, I think if there is confusion, probably the, the, where I'm gonna come down on this is to recommend that the board adopt a policy which so that we'll, we'll have an operating process for this, for this going forward. You certainly have rulemaking authority as long as you don't rewrite the ordinance, which you do not have the authority to do. There was also a question about whether you could get multiple distributions in a year. I, I would think that if you are already separated and if money comes in representing, it becomes in two tranches, for example, that there shouldn't be anything that delays the distribution from a bookkeeping standpoint and a tax standpoint. It's probably better to have one distribution a year. But that's something that would really be confined to the board's discretion as to how to handle.
Bob, you know, whether, whether a, a distribution is going to be included as taxable income is really is, is the member's decision because they have qualified rollover options.
They do.
Both of them. And some do, some don't, Bob, but that's their choice. And I think that, that tax implications are personal, not the plan's problem.
Well, but, but the point about rollovers, and I'm glad you raised it because I should have. You're only allowed one rollover in a twelve-month period from a qualified plan to a qualified plan. So if somebody's gonna take, someone would have the ability to take one distribution in cash and do one as a rollover or wait and do a single rollover for all, which is why I think for our police members, it may actually make sense to do a, if they're, if they're in the rollover state of mind, then a single, you know, aggregating eligible distributions into a single rollover would make sense. Otherwise, you're gonna have to wait a year to do it. And I have a, a memo that we did for another client explaining the single rollover in a twelve-month period rule. Uh, I'll forward that on to William for distribution to the board. Cause I thought it was, used to be you could get one a year, meaning a calendar year. But they've changed the rules and now it's one every twelve months. So that I think may change the minds of how, you know, people who've separated want to take their money. But again, sure, it's, you know, this is one of those things that, that you get the calls. As long as you comply with the tax code and, and, and you know, meet all the other definitions in six oh eight. I think, you know, other how you, how you implement it is really your, your call.
I just have another question. It's not related to, to the share plan. So if a sponsor needed, wanted to get a opinion or response on the applicability of something in one seven, one eight, five, who at the division actually responds to those anymore? Cause I gotta tell you, Mr. Brinkman doesn't respond to anything. I have a request that's four years old to him right after Ms. She maker retired. Never got a response.
Well, it's, it's, it's a longstanding tradition in the division of retirement to do two things. One, make it up as they go along. And, and, and not necessarily the same answer on a given day, which is why one of the primary defenses that we raised in our litigation with them was that they make this crap up as they go along and that you're, you are not allowed to rule make by adjudication, meaning you just have a different, you wait for an event and then you make up a rule. You're actually supposed to go through the formal, they're a state agency. They should be going through the formal Florida Administrative Procedures Act, which is one twenty Florida statutes, rule-making process. Now, the last time they made rules was in nineteen eighty-seven and they got their fingers caught in the drawer because they overreached in terms of the rules. The first district court of appeal invalidated ninety percent of their rules. We fixed it legislatively later. Because some of the things were a benefit to the boards, but they've really never had the stomach to issue rules since then. As far as getting a response, I get a pretty good response out of the legal department. Particularly because they're working at home now and I know his home number. So and I'm not shy about calling him in the nighttime. So I'll get a pretty good response. If you have a specific question, Steve, can you just send me an email and I'll get them answered for you?
I will do that. Um, cause I don't like the idea of, of a plant doing your best effort to, to figure out what they need and then find out after the fact that we're gonna be going through an administrative procedure. I thought to think that some, that the division is there to actually provide guidance and help is just probably done on my part.
You know, I think it's quite frankly, it's been a reflection. It's a reflection from the top. The Department of Management Services for which the division of retirement is a part. At a staff level, if, if you need help with something at the FRS side's been great on the local government side while they're friendly and polite. Um, and I have a cordial relationship with them. They don't like to answer questions. Sometimes the, if you don't know the answer or you're not getting clear direction from whoever the person is higher up on the food chain, then the easiest thing is just to not answer the phone. But we're very persistent. So sometimes what we need to do is to write them and say, this is how we're gonna do it unless you tell us that it's wrong. And then if you're gonna tell us that it's wrong, tell us why it's wrong. Sometimes that will generate an answer. So that's why if you have a specific list, if you could send it to me and then you and I'll pick a time either later in this week or, or next week to catch up with each other and I can make sure that I articulate your questions directly.
Will do, Bob. I, it just, it's just a notable difference since Ms. She maker retired. So.
I, I could call her at home and I have her cell number. Ask her to.
Yeah, unfortunately, her opinion doesn't matter anymore. So.
No, no, I was just gonna ask her to come back to work.
Oh, well, that would be, I think even members would, would prefer that over the lack of response that you did.
You know, Trish was trained by, by Marvin Clayton. And Marvin, for whom chapters one seventy-five and one eighty-five, those are the Marvin Clayton, you know, firing police retirement acts. And um, and he was very much a, a person who dedicated to public service. Trish followed in that tradition. And while I said, I think the people that are there now, Steve Barden and, and Keith Brinkman are, are honorable guys and they, they know the subject matter. I, I think they are getting some direction to be less helpful. And um, I, you know, that's, you know, it's partly a political problem depending on who the secretary of management services may be at any one time. I know when we were having issues about virtual meetings, I called and wrote repeatedly to the general counsel for the governor's office, who's the person who's supposed to get those, supposed to get those requests. Plus I wrote to the guy who's in charge of emergencies for the governor, used to be in the legislature, whose parents I know well, I did dinner at their house and, and, and we've socialized and I still couldn't get an answer. So they must not like my table manners. But I did bring wine though. The, and it was good. The, the, the point being it's sometimes this is, sometimes this is a, a, a just a tenor of the administration that's in charge and not necessarily a a desire to personally give a front. I mean, we've taken the position, for example, virtual meetings unless you have a local ordinance that says you can't, you cannot have a virtual meeting. There are several that a couple smaller cities that we deal with do actually have a provision in their city code that says if you want to vote, you gotta be in the room. Physically, those are the only ones that we say have to have an in-person meeting. The Attorney General's office was asked in March, you know, do you have to have a physical quorum present? And their opinion was, we think that's a better practice, but it's not a requirement. No law. And there may be something in the Gainesville city code I don't know about, but I don't think there's anything in the pensions section that requires physical presence, but there's nothing in the sunshine law. And there's nothing in chapter one seventy-five or one eighty-five or one twelve or the municipal home, municipal home rule powers act, which is what gives Gainesville the city much of its authority under that provisions, article eight of the state constitution. And so we've told people if you want to meet virtually because it's either convenient or cost effective, a health issue, then go ahead. Walt, did you say something?
No, well, I was making an aside to my wife. That's one of the downsides of Zoom from home. Thank you though, Bob.
I come to the office or you, you wouldn't hear anything but barking. Are there any other questions for me, Chairman? Did you want me to, to stay on for the discussion about the administrator or not?
Uh, I mean, I think that's up to you, Mr. Clausner. Uh, we're gonna.
If you want my opinion on anything, I mean, it's legal. His short answer. If you want to hire your own administrator, you may do so. You have that authority. You just have to determine from a fiduciary standpoint, your cost effectiveness and quality of delivery of services is the most important thing. We went through two selections this week for cities that decided, in fact, one of them was plantation where my office is, which is a smaller city than, than, than Gainesville, but they were being served their pension funds. Police, fire and general were all being served by the city government. And the person who had been doing the work is going to be retiring and the it's a strong mayor form of government. The mayor's decided that the board should just go out and hire their own, that they didn't want to have to worry about replacing. But we were getting help from, you know, multiple departments, from payroll, from finance and from HR, who I think is where the actual pension administrator lady reported. And we were being charged, uh, the funds reached being charged on a pro rata basis. The fire plan is, it's volunteer fire department with professional paramedics. So that's a fairly small plan. Uh, police plan is the biggest and general has the most members, but we were being charged on an asset and basis, actually we're, take it back, we're being charged on a member basis. How many lives there were in the plan and each plan in essence would give the money back. But remember, part of the normal cost of your plan is the administrative expenses. So this is just money that's going around in a circle. When you hire a, a third-party administrator, whether you hire an employee, whether you hire a firm to do it, that, you know, you, you, you are paying the bill because that person is, is your, is, is your contractor, your worker. But the ultimate cost is being built back to the plan sponsor. And so you know, it's a, I, I think it's about money and I think it's about, I, I think it's about service. There are, it's, it is hard to find single employees. We've had that issue. The plans that have their own in-house staff in a Fort Lauderdale has been looking for somebody for a while. Miami has a staff of eight for police and fire and they're concerned because their staff is, is aging and they've got a great group. They've been there for years. But many of them are coming up to their own retirement, the administrators of the drop plan. So they're worried about succession planning. So if you are gonna hire your own as a, as a part of that, you need to take account of a succession plan almost immediately in terms of, of, of who you, who you retain. If you hire a firm, that's the main question that you ask them. They're all about, they call cost about the same, but you need to be asking them about their own succession planning. And also with external, you need to be concerned about data privacy. Your, the information that you have in your plan is extremely valuable. According to the cybersecurity experts that we deal with, the name, address, date of birth, social security number and background routing information of like one of our retirees for electronic payment is worth a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars on the, on the illegal market. You know, the, the cybersecurity theft market, multiply a thousand plus times the number of retirees you have. And that's what your stuff's worth. It's, it's, it's worth, you know, hundreds of thousands. So cybersecurity of form from whomever you hire is a, is a primary concern. You want to be sure they have insurance. You want to be sure their folks are bonded. We have had, uh, we just settled a lawsuit where there was not a defalcation, but there was a serious breach of, of the standard of care. And we're lucky to be able to collect from insurance because the plan did suffer a whole boatload of very old retirees got way overpaid and the ability to collect the money from them was about zero. Cause you know, even though the, the amount of money, there were people who lived probably for their pension check and their social security check. And to try to get the money back would have been expensive. So we went to the person who made the mistake and their insurer and they paid. So these are all issues that you need to face. You know, I, I'm not there every day, obviously. So how you whether, how your relationship will be, you know, continue, if you decide to continue with the city or if you decide to either hire an employee. And if you do, remember, if you hire directly, you will need to make, they'll, they'll be your employee. Uh, I would recommend that we make them a contractor where that whoever provides a service to you incorporates themselves. They will pay their own self-employment tax. They'll pay their own. They'll, they'll pay for their own workers' compensation so that you don't have their own health insurance and everything else that goes with it. Cause as you know, when you hire an employee, you're gonna wanna, they're gonna wanna be provided benefits. Tampa has a staff of I'm gonna say eight. They have, they're, they provide health insurance to their workers and they have a defined benefit retirement plan that the fund itself funds. And Miami's general Miami police and fire, Jacksonville police and fire and a couple others do, do the same. So these are all considerations that you should have. In terms of service, that's, you gotta decide what you want. So that's now the sum total of what I've learned in forty-four years of dealing with pension administrators.
All right, Bob. Well, thank you for the information. Steve, you had something?
I just want to thank the other members of trustees for indulging me. I, I keep forgetting sometimes that Bob thinks he's paid by the word. Just kidding with you, Bob. There's no such thing as a simple answer. I was hoping you would stop it. It's legal, but I should have known better. So.
Well, I can't really, I can't see you that well because I'm using the gallery view. Next time I'll see your hand go to your forehead slapping it when it's time or just wave a flag. So.
It's, it's, it's my last chance this year to, to, you know.
I, 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 I take it all in the loving spirit in which it's intended.
But that was an excellent seventy-five dollar answer. I, I enjoyed it.
Okay, good. Well, I was doing that. I actually gave you the more detail seriously so that I could actually turn off the clock here and save you all money. If there, if you decide to go further with hiring outside, then I'll provide a list of the companies that we deal with who we think have the proper insurance and backup that can protect your, and, and have the bandwidth to do your work. And uh, as well as a draft contract that we would insist that they sign if they want to come to work. So I, I assume you'll, someone will bring me up to speed after the fact. And Steve, I'll look for your, for your questions in the email.
All right, Bob. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you and happy holidays to all and healthy and, and I hope our, our frontline first responders are getting a shot real soon.
All right, Bob, one sec here. I think Bruce had something.
Okay, yeah, I've got a few questions. So under the second two ordinance that we referred to back a few minutes ago. Well, actually about thirty minutes ago. So in that, I believe it's under distribution. It actually, unfortunately, I don't have it in front of me today because somehow I forgot it. But under the distributions, I believe it says that the pension board is actually tasked with any distributions through for the one eighty-five funds.
It is. I mean, that's why I said, how you want to do this here distributions. Well, there's the own, there's, there's one section for distribution retirees and it speaks about rollovers or, or paying survivors. And then the section, it's actually subsection E is account distributions. And it really is kinda up to you. There is elections that people have to make, how you want it, how it's gonna be debited or credited with gains and losses for those who are still working.
Looking for the part where it talks about that the approvals come through the city commit, through the pension board for the approval of the one eighty-five distribution.
Well, it says the city has no responsibility, which means the board has all the responsibility. So.
So should the board, should the board be looking at every distribution that would come through here to approve it of whether a member should get it or not?
I, I, that's why I want you to have a policy and, and.
Section two that it did, it wasn't a policy or in the ordinance of section two, but yeah, we could be more specific in that.
Well, I, I would really, I mean, in terms of how you physically go about making the distribution, the ordinance is actually pretty detailed. Well, I I would really, I mean, in terms of how you physically go about making the distribution, the ordinance is actually pretty detailed. But obviously along the way, and I remember when you were first having the issues about setting up the distribution methodology. You know, I think that having a rule that kind of executes itself, which you all have had the opportunity to approve is is really the best way to go because then you don't have to remember how you did at the time before because you have a practice in place. And I'm a big believer in writing stuff down because I forget things. So I'll probably even forget that I went to the meeting later. No, it'll be on my time sheet. I'll remember. The uh but because you you know, uniformity, I I think is the one is the best protection against, you know, unhappy customers.
Right.
It is the board's responsibility. It says the city has no responsibilities in this at all.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, they could always come to the board and make a request for the for for their check to to come through and and I understand we all have to go through the legalese of, you know, if they were to get two distributions, it would be, it has to be a twelve months break before they would receive a second check, correct?
Well, they could have, they could, i- if if you had a situation, we had money that that came in at twice in a year just because it was delayed from the source of the money. That you could have more than one distribution in a year, but you you know, you're gonna have the it's going to create operational issues for you. So and if somebody wants to roll it over, if the money comes, as I mentioned earlier, if it comes in twice, they can't take two rollovers within twelve months of each other. So those are the, that's some of the reasons why I I think of, you know, the rule doesn't have to read like War and Peace. I mean, it can be a two pager. You know, I can put, I could make the print really small so I can get more words in there, but.
We've been dealing with this for quite some time, so I'm just trying to get some type of guidance of what I can tell my members, since we do have people that are actually exiting uh with a with a retirement eligible, you know, twenty plus years of how to get their distributions and when they should take it. So, I mean, if we're gonna be able to get some some guidance through the board and we make some decisions today, that would be fantastic, that I can tell them something because I know we discussed it back on October twenty-eighth and we don't have a fine, you know, you know, the what we're waiting for for your, you know, more specific letter to give them a little little more guidance of whether they should take a distribution now, or I think today we could probably agree that our members can receive their one eighty-five funds as we wait for for the first distribution and we wait for this second wave that is now two years behind. And be able to
Well, one of the things that we're gonna have to do, I'm sorry, go ahead.
They're just up in the air whether they should take a distribution or they wait. And I I really don't have any clear guidance to give them until I guess the board
If a member has a distribution for which they are eligible to take and we have informed them of their eligibility, they gotta take it, whether they take it as cash or take it as a rollover. Otherwise, you get into a situation under the tax code for what's called a Coda, which is an acronym for cash or deferred arrangement. If somebody owes you money and uh meaning an employer owes you money and says, well, I can pay you on December thirty-first or I can pay you on January first. And that makes a difference because of your
How the ordinance is written is that they can take one distribution and only one. And so they can pick, is it going to be at the time that they leave or do they wait? Because the city's not going to get their money from which they were employed for at least a twelve month, where within that twelve month period, we're we're employed for a full year of that timeframe. Again, as you know, one eighty-five funds are one year behind. So they would be eligible for that one if they were a member for that full year. But their distribution, because the funds aren't there, would only be for, let's say they did twenty years, they only got nineteen years.
What I would do is 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 require an election. In other words, you say to the member, you must make an election as to how you want to get the money and when before, you know, prior to December thirty-one of each year. But also make it clear that that money may be delayed depending on the receipt. This is revenue sharing money from another source so that it may be delayed. The one thing that I also see that's been a problem in share plans is sometimes people want to game the market because, you know, this is invested for gains and losses. And somebody says, well, I want it on the first day of the quarter uh after my eligibility date. And then that then the market takes a huge dive the day before and they go, yeah, I want to change it to the the last day of the preceding quarter, you know, before the value of my account went down. That's why I wanted you to have an operating rule so that you eliminate A, people's ability to game the system and B, um the individual headaches that come because each individual's got some particular financial plan uh in mind. We just had an issue in Palm Bay about someone who bought a boat and he can't get a distribution till after the first of the year and apparently the boat payments due. So these are the, but these are common issues and that's why you need to be uniform. I mean, I think it's fair to say to the members, you're going to get one distribution a year. If you retire prior to the time of the distribution, you and but you were working in the year in which the revenue, you know, the chapter money was earned, you will be entitled to that money. And then the question comes from, if the money's not in our hands, obviously, it's not going to get in your earnings. So somebody's going to say, well, should the plan attribute it earnings? Because it should have been in there. And the answer is it isn't in there. And this is a program that's run entirely financed entirely by the revenue that it receives. It's not intended to be an actuarial liability for the system. So these are all the things that need to be taken into account because I I every one of the questions that I just rhetorically posed are things that I've heard this week.
And did you work with a lot of other plans? So this reason I'm just, it it seems the the most of, well, I'm I'm gonna take off the two years away because of the act, the argument over the, from my perspective, that's the only way you could distribute that within the confines of of the structure of the plan is to make the distributions. It's not a member. That wasn't a um decision. Is our plan unique that we tie a delayed receipt to the distribution of like a plan year that has ended or do most of them tie the just the um computation of the share in the year that it was seed for that plan year? Bob, is if if that, if my question makes sense. Because I think that is really one of the big flaws in the manner that, you know, you're still eligible for a share and it could be ten months before that comes in comes in. So we, it's designed where it's going to require two distributions. Be in the twelve months, sometimes it won't, Bob. It's all depends on the state, people like paying their money.
There are some plans that do a supplemental distribution, typically on the fire side because they, you know, there's a second check that can come in for fire based on the way that fire insurance is taxed. But you, your earlier question being, is it based on the plan year or the calendar year? The problem is the division. The 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 receipt of the revenue is is based on a calendar year. Because uh all the arguments about claims have to be either presented or or have to be presented before December thirty-first of that tax year. Remember, this is the insurance companies are taxed by the state on an annual ba- on a calendar year basis, not on the state's fiscal year basis. Yet our plan as a, you know, independent municipal agency operates like all other governments in Florida do on an October first to September thirty plan year. So that's you, you can, you you can plan the distribution date however you want. The critical thing is if if we're gonna base it on a plan year, um you could end up literally with distributions twice in the same year. If you tie it to the calendar year, then you will have taken into account your tax reporting for the year. And I agree, the member's individual tax problem is not yours. But you do report what's distributed based on a December. I'm sorry? Oh, okay. The, you know, your your ten ninety-nine Rs, which obviously, you know, would include monies distributed by the share plan are based on a December thirty-one year. I, it's a business decision how you wanna, how you wanna do it.
I'm sorry, Bruce. I got a couple questions.
So now we've we've gone through through section two, we've, you know, seen that the kind of pension, so we can work out, you know, distributions, you know, whether it's a request or we do two, it's up to the member of what they're gonna do, how, where, wherever they put their money. I do, I I like the fact that if we could have the the member actually come to us and say, I'd like my distribution one eighty-five. I don't think there's anyone that's retiring that says I need in in our group, I know Palm Beach and Tampa might be different, but for us, it's in in most cases, it's it's you're leaving, you're gonna have twenty plus years and uh if you're eligible for that money.
Some some plans require a distribute, if you leave, they just, you know, except for delayed distributions, you your money goes right out.
Has to go, I I right, that's why I think the two distributions make a lot more sense that, okay, you're gonna get your money here and then you'll get a second one as when it shows up and we approve.
That is what Miami, City of Miami Police have been doing since nineteen sixty is when you leave, you must take your money. I think you have sixty days or, you know, some fairly short period in which you gotta take it. But then the following year, you get the distribution which arrives that following year, but which represented the year in which you retired. They have a double, they have a dual distribution, but never more than one distribution per person in a year.
Yeah, Steve. Can I uh just explain the process, the the way it occurs now so that maybe board members can understand a little better and and understand what making this change would mean? So right now, there's just a single distribution when someone leaves and it's based on what I was told, you know, the ordinance indicated that the balance is calculated based on the premium taxes that have been received at the time that the person terminates. Because there's a one-year lag in the receipt, you're you're correct, there is an additional payment that comes in the following year after someone terminates usually. It really doesn't matter whether they get that payment or not. If you start giving that payment, that that second payment for the last year to everyone, it essentially reduces everyone else's payments, share payments for the twenty years that they're in the plan. So you're either getting an extra few hundred dollars the year after you leave or you're getting an extra ten or twenty dollars a year for the twenty years that you're here. It balances out. Does that make sense?
Not to me.
Maybe if I saw it in writing or.
For all members that made a difference of ten or twenty dollars, the ones that still would have been in the plan.
If you're giving someone an extra two or three hundred dollars in a given year, you're reducing everyone else's distribution in that year.
Yeah, 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 that part I get.
Right.
Okay. But and and for for clarification here, isn't the, aren't the police renegotiating the plan? Is that current?
Well, that was gonna be my next question is that if we were able to, if we as the board oversees the pension, it'd be one eighty-five distributions. Then do we need to go to the city commission with our change with the union?
That's not my question, though. Are are it is FOP or PVA negotiating the share plan? Is that currently going on or has it been?
We we It's completed.
It's complete.
Yes.
Yeah, we did that.
Now, so so I'm like, can I ask, answer Bruce's question? The the membership definition is is in the ordinance. So the ordinance has to be modified to modify the membership.
Okay.
Definitions, which is different than, I think what Bob was suggesting on a distribution procedure I like to refer to as opposed to a policy.
Correct.
Easier to, they're easier to to modify if you find something wrong. I can tell you right now, there are things in our share plans, both of them, that that you don't, you don't recognize as problematic until you've been in them for a while. And I think, I think the delayed receipt of the uh, you know, the earning and when the money is received is one of those things that we're saying, man, if we could have done it differently, that plan year, the the plant, the current plan year distribution would be be based on that receipt that occurred in that plan year. And you wouldn't have this delay anymore. You know, it would be, your your balance would be locked and loaded, excuse it, excuse me, at the end of that plan year because the money had been, with the exception of what happened over the last two years, Bruce. I mean, right? No one could have predicted that ten years ago when we sat down and started talking about this. But we we have what we have and I think I understand the math that that William is describing that over time it all evens out. Uh we haven't had the plan for twenty years and I think a second distribution is the most equitable way to treat the members that have earned it is of the way we define earning the share and the receipt not being in the same plan year. So I'm add, to me, it's just something we just need to work out. It's it's, you know. So Bob, so when you say within two, in twelve months, it's 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 not a split on tax years. It is actually a count of twelve months from the last distribution.
Yes. What you used to be able to do, you used to be able to do a rollover on December thirty-one and then you could do another one on on one one because it was tax years. Now it's twelve months. So if I do rollover on July one, I can't do another one until the next July.
Got it. So for clarification, where are we on this? That it's already been bargained or arguing about the distribution? Okay, we're, that's what I'm asking, are we?
It was there something in the most recent collective bargaining agreements that needs to change the ordinance? I mean, I looked at them. I don't remember seeing anything, but.
It was a, it was a, it was a pension bargaining, not a collective bargaining process. And it was specific to look at how they wanted to define member, being eligible for 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 a share for that particular plan year. They've had the uh the benefit of time to to see um what works better and, you know, it's from our perspective, and we speak from the city's perspective, it's their plan. You know, they, if they choose to amend it and we can certainly I can certainly send you the language, Bob, to look at it. There there will be fewer people eligible for the allocation of the share after the plan is amended amended, Bob. It's it's, it is narrowing the the allocation to people who will actually retire and because it's a supplemental retirement benefit. So that second distribution won't be a few hundred dollars three years from now. It could be three or four thousand dollars. And I, if it were me, I wouldn't want to leave that on the table because
Has ordinance been amended to reflect the further discussion?
You're not gonna leave anything on the table. Whatever you don't get in the final year, you get in every other year. It balances. That's my point. It doesn't matter how you do it. You either get an extra, if Steve is using they get a lower amount in you, well, the the person, if you make a change in a given year, then whoever retires immediately after that gets a benefit, but everyone else loses out. And then after ten years, it balances, is what I'm saying.
In the, in the next meeting, can you bring us an example of officer X retired? This is what he got.
Sure.
This is what the board got because I, it's, I'm, I'm not a mathematician, so.
I'll I'll send everyone a spreadsheet that or a a calculation, very simple calculation that shows what I'm talking about. It, I mean, I'll
Everybody hold up a sec. For clarification, what does, what do the police want?
Uh more clarification. I can't even tell tell my members now, just because, well, like Steve has said, we've gone back and forth. More clarification, I can't even tell, tell my members now, just because, well, like Steve has said, we've gone back and forth on relative consistency. I can't, I really don't have a straight answer to give my members of what the, how the distribution's gonna work on a 185, nor a suggestion of how they should or shouldn't take it. So, it's more of, how are the dis- It's a frustration of different messages, some have received their 185, some have not, some were allowed to take it for once, once a year, so some are getting checks once a year, not now, because we haven't even had it for the last two years. But there were some that at a time back were actually could elect to take the distribution and then they would get a check once a year and they had to put it into a specific retirement account. And there were just a few select members that were here at the time that actually chose that selection. But that has since gone away, so there is no selection for that. So now when you have people that leave at 14 years, but again, our new change with the members, that was approved by the unions, should forego any of those problems, because you'll, you'll be retirement eligible if you left, so that, that should result. There won't be any more 12 years and they take a 185 distribution.
So. Steve? An, an individual is not eligible for a, a direct distribution till they meet the definition of retirement, period. Even if they, you know, they would get it when they get their vested benefit, Bruce, except, you know. So if you had 13 years of service and you left, you still have that share plan balance, because you vested in it and earned it, but it's not distributed on termination, in fact, that was the reason you couldn't, was one of the reasons the, the division gave us guidance, you couldn't use a 457 as, as an external one, because that's a termination of employment plan, not a qualified retirement plan. So, they don't get the distribution directly, because they're not, they haven't met the underlying plan's definition of retirement, is how that's been applied.
And I understand that, it was, it was a little bit different, because some did get one that they could have put into a specific plan that, and, and it kinda changed. And, and again, we're, we're wanting to move forward and that's why we changed it through the unions, where we, we're not gonna have that issue more. Well, and I guess we're waiting for it to go to the city commission for approval?
Yes, that's correct. So if Bob would like to look at it before we put it on the, in the agenda, that, that is, I, I-
Please.
Back to my office. And it really just, there, there's really two lines that change in the entire ordinance, it's as of a specific date. To earn a share, you have to have at least 19 years of service as of the, during the plan year complexion, something like that. I'm paraphrasing, Bob, but.
All right, but, um, I'd love for you to look over it, however, we are ready to move forward to the city commission and whenever, and so we don't, we're not interested in waiting on the time, as far as the union is concerned, we, we had wanted it to be on the commission's table last time they met. It didn't make it there, we are in hopes of a, a lot sooner, I don't think we have a January meeting, so I, I'd be great for you to review it and look over it and, and have your input, but, I know those members all would like to move forward to, because we do have people that are still in the, in the works of retiring, that'll come along and be affected, the sooner the better for the approval by the commission. And again, that's a, you have to, a two-part first reading, second reading, correct?
Yes.
So it's, that's gonna take us some time to begin with, so, Bob would love for you to review, but again, we, we would like it to be pushed forward to the city commission, unless there's gonna be some-
If you got something you want me to look at, I'm, I'm really not going anywhere at all.
I can tell it to you today, it, it, it is literally about a three-minute read.
I, I have a, well, you don't know how fast I read. That, can I ask a question? January 27 said-
I was gonna ask that same question.
A- as long as you were talking about when we're gonna meet again, it, it, what's special that's happening on the 27th?
Yeah. Someone put a special meeting in. But, uh, I guess we'll talk about that in a second, as far as I'm aware, I mean, I think I'm done with everything I was going to discuss about, about that, we'll move forward and, you'll move forward with the city commission, Steve? You'll move forward with? Okay.
Bob has something that he, that he thinks is wrong that we just pulled up for the section.
I can't.
Make a small amendment, it's that simple.
And Bob, what, what we're basically doing as a union is we're just pushing it, we're changing it from being retirement eligible, or meaning that you met that 10-year mark, we're pushing it to 19 years, and so it, it's just for those 19 to plus years is when you'll be eligible for the 185 funds.
Okay.
Okay, so, I hate to bring this up anymore, but since we're here talking about it, what's gonna happen till this is put into place, or till commission approves it, and it's made ordinance?
Correct.
Is that when they started bargaining?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
And we're already looking at-
Okay, the money hasn't been there, so nobody's left, all right, so great. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Clausner.
Thank you, may I be excused?
Yes, yes, sir. We'll, we'll let you know how, however anything goes with the, the discussion about the independent administrator.
Great.
Bob did have a question about, and I think we all did, um, someone put on their January 27th special meeting closed?
Yes.
I believe some of the trustees requested a, a special meeting, I didn't know it was the January 27th, oh, it does say special.
Well, I'm just looking at the proposed agenda, that's why I asked.
Yes, I believe Mr. Lewis and a couple of us talked about maybe getting together and a discussion about the, the idea of where the plan's going and how everything's being administrated and everything else. There was something without other topics to, to get into.
All right, I just want to know if it was something that I had any particular special assignment to be prepared for, that's all.
Does anyone feel that we'll need Mr. Clausner there for that? I think it was more of an investment strategy or?
Well, I got the impression it was an orientation of past experience, present experience, any, any different approach that needs to be taken, but it was more for the, for the benefit of those of us who've been on the board for the last, for less than four or five years.
Sorry, and that's what I meant to say, well, I meant it was more of a, a, just the board to discuss our, our opinions and views on where we are, where we're going. That, that, am I missing anything?
Okay, that's a no.
All right, Bob, well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Do well all, thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda, William, Willis Towers Watson, is Cole or Zachary still there?
Yep, both here.
Can you all, can you all hear me?
Loud and clear.
Perfect. Uh, thanks to Jane and good morning, everyone. Um, so we're gonna flip over to the executive summary, everyone has that handy. And looking at the agenda on slide two, pretty straightforward agenda today, we'll give a market review and a performance review, and that'll be it. So with that, we'll jump right into it, on slide four, you can see a capital markets review, and this is as of October 31st, so I'll give it an update as well, more recently. So, yeah, I can see the presentation now, um, yeah, so on slide four, and you can see in the top left-hand corner here, S and P 500 for the three-month return was about flat and year-to-date was up 2.8%. So the month of October, the, the actual, uh, the S and P 500 was down 3%, so the election uncertainty pretty much weighed on markets here. Um, and then obviously, we, we got the election results in November and markets have rebounded pretty significantly since then. In November, the S and P was up 11% and it's up another 3% so far in December. The, the most recent appreciation of, of markets now is focused on another round of stimulus. So that's what's driving positive markets currently. The bottom left, you can see inflation remains low, um, the real GDP growth is up 33% for the second quarter, and then unemployment has come down to about 6.9%, so the economy has actually added back about a little over half the jobs that it had lost, so it's a positive data point there. Fixed income markets have not changed too much, um, obviously yields fell significantly beginning of the year. They haven't moved around too much, they ticked back up a little bit in the last month or two, um, as markets have appreciated, but other than that, no significant changes. So on slide five, um, we, we've talked about this a lot, I, I've talked about how growth has really dominated value, and you've seen this in your portfolio with, with LSV lagging behind SGA and, and DGI. And so this is just kind of a, a proof point here, showing how these large tech companies have really dominated the markets. So you can see in the left-hand chart here, that this is the, the makeup of the five largest companies as a percent of S and P 500. So right now, it's, it's at 20%, so just five companies make up 20% of 500 companies, um, which is really, I mean, it's the highest it's been in, you know, 30 years. And on the right, you can see performance-wise this year, um, the divergence in this as well. So you see Facebook, Amazon, Apple, Microsoft and Google up 42% year-to-date through September, and the other 495 companies are down 2%. So this is really just, um, you know, to illustrate that active management is, has struggled, and it struggled because it's completely dominated by the outperformance of these, of these five companies. Any questions here before we move on?
That's, that's through September 30, obviously, hasn't picked up the last two months.
Yeah, the, the, so with those tech companies, um, they sold off a little bit in October and they've rebounded again since then, so it's, you know, if you were to look at that as today, it probably is pretty much unchanged.
I was thinking more about the value stocks too, they seem to have a nice increase.
Yeah, that, that's right, yeah, yeah, since, since September 30th, they have increased, um, probably more so than, than the growth companies, but still, if you look longer term, growth is still dominated, yeah.
Mr. Jerry, Mr. I have a question, on slide three of the bond market, explain the numbers to me, because I'm having trouble understanding, I looked at a couple of others and they're similar, like, loan government is 17.5%, so up 17.5% return.
So I had a little trouble hearing you, but I think you're asking about the 17.5% for loan government.
Correct.
And so, yeah, so that is, that is the return, you know, year-to-date through October 31st, and for, you know, for that segment of the market, and that's really due to that bottom right-hand chart of treasury rates there, how much those have fallen. So when those yields fall, obviously the, the price of the bond appreciates and with yields coming down, the price of these bonds have gone up, and that's why you see such positive performance from, from those segments.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So on slide six, I'm looking at plan performance here, I want to focus on, you know, three-month year-to-date, but, but for the month, the plan returned minus 1.3%, as I mentioned, the S and P was down 3%, so compared just to that, a little bit positive performance against the benchmark, positive performance as well. Focusing on the three-month and the year-to-date number, um, three-month is 0.5% versus 0.6, so right in line. And year-to-date performance has struggled a little bit, at minus 0.3 versus positive 0.9. And that struggle year-to-date is, is coming from the domestic equity segment, specifically those, those value managers and and a little bit of underperformance in the alt credit segment as well, so we'll walk through that now, and you can see in the large cap equity segment, LSV year-to-date minus 17.7 versus the index of minus 12.7. So, you know, 5% underperformance year-to-date. Vanguard is following its benchmark as we would anticipate, and Sustainable Growth Advisors has performed very well, 22.6 versus 20.1. Uh, so very strong performance there, and that, once again, goes to the growth versus the value. Very similar story in the small cap segment, LSV down 26 versus the index of 18.7. So, um, pretty significant underperformance there, whereas Discipline Growth Investors has made up for that, um, positive 21.8% versus 4.7, so extremely good performance from, from DGI.
I, I know you guys don't do seat-of-the-pants projections, but what might this look like at our January 27th meeting? If we were to do it in January 27th, with, with the December 31 numbers?
Um, it's a, it's a tough-
And I, I, I don't want to put you on the spot, I know it's hard to do a seat-of-the-pants estimate with the complete-
Yeah, it's definitely, it's definitely a, a tough answer. I mean, if we get a, if the, if we get a stimulus program agreed upon by Congress, I think you could see markets just generally continuing to appreciate, uh, the, just to play devil's advocate with myself, you could also see a lot of selling later in the month of December, just due to capital gains harvesting. So those two forces playing against each other, don't know which one will win, but probably those top of mind for most market participants.
Yeah, and maybe just to add to that, Cole, um, you know, as, as you've noted, performance figures here on the page are as of the end of October. Of course, November proved to have been one of the strongest months in the history of equity markets. And so what we've now seen, you know, quarter-to-date for the broad US equity market, you know, through the beginning of this week, i- is an additional 11 and a half percent return. Now that's been driven largely by value, so if you look at the, you know, Russell 2000 Value Index here on the page, as of the end of October, year-to-date, it was down almost 19%, right? If we fast forward to this week, um, the Russell 2000 Value Index is actually up over 2% year-to-date, um, because it's returned over 30% for the quarter. So, uh, what you've seen since the election, and since the, you know, it's partially the, the resolution of the election, it's, it's probably more directly tied to the approval and rollout of the vaccines post, post-election as well. You see now those value stocks play catch-up to, to the growth stocks, such that overall equity markets here in the US are up again almost 12% for the quarter, so you're gonna see, you know, well, you're gonna see for, for the portion of the portfolio that was invested, um, pretty strong appreciation. Of course, we had left the, those bond proceeds in cash, so about 15, 17% of the portfolio was in cash during the, the month of November. But markets have continued to trend upwards in December, and, and we did regain exposure to, to markets as of December 1st. Should be a positive, positive story at year-end.
Thanks, Zach. So, uh, so looking at the more international equity, uh, continued positive performance from them. It struggled a little bit just for the month, but all other periods under review, they are in the benchmark, so they continue to do a really good job for the portfolio. And lastly, on this page, the SSGA bond fund, up about 5.6% year-to-date, as, as those have fallen, that has appreciated. And that will be sold on the Mellon Strategy, uh, and that paperwork is just gonna turn, so. Moving on to the alt credit segment on slide seven. So, um, positive performance here for the three months, although the year-to-date performance continues to be underwhelming, largely driven to a lot of the market volatility we experienced in March earlier this year. Wellington Securities Opportunities Fund is playing catch-up, up 2.8% versus 0% for three months, but about 2% relative performance year-to-date. Aries High Yield Fund is also pretty well for all the periods in a review here, not strong relative performance, but it's, it's tracking its benchmark appropriately. Brandywine continues to struggle, and that's one that we've had our eye particularly close on. Brandywine continues to struggle and that's one that we've had our eye particularly close on. Day down four point seven versus positive two point seven. And three month is is negative performance as well. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. One Sharp is actually is performing really well, is doing exactly what we want it to do. It's, you know, we anticipate that fund earned, you know, five to seven percent a year with pretty low volatility. We're at four percent right now year to date. So and five point one percent for the last one year. So we that's been a a good value add for the portfolio. And lastly, LeverMax also playing catch up here, but its year to date numbers are very underwhelming, given a lot of the mark market losses we experienced in March. And then before I hand it over to Zach, I'll just touch on the real estate segment real quick. Principal and Harrison Street both performing really well. You can see that Harrison Street actually, that's one year number. So we we just just crossed over that. There is five point one versus zero point six. So really strong performance. Principal is also positive performance at zero point two. They're they're paired very well together and they Harrison Street's been a good addition to the to the portfolio. And the asset class has definitely been beneficial for the overall plan. I'll pause there for any comments or questions. All right, seeing there are none, conclude on on slide eight. Which we have just wanted to give the board an update on the bond trades here. So the to align the portfolio with targets as of on on December first, the Vanguard S and P five hundred index, LSV Small Cap and the Football International Fund were all topped up with bond proceeds. So now that they are, they are all at their target weights. The, as I mentioned earlier, the Mellon Fallen Angels Strategy is funded with the proceeds from selling SSGA US Intermediate Government. I believe we just got that paperwork back yesterday. So that that should happen any moment now. But just want to make the board aware that the proceeds have been put to work now. They're fully invested in the market. Exposure has been reset to normal. Zach, anything to add?
No, I I think that was good call. And I think I just wanted to socialize, you know, two general ideas with the committee that I think we'll aim to go into more detail on during the February meeting. But we've talked previously about Brandywine and how we downgraded that strategy and we're then considering whether to replace it or simply to remove it. And I think the approach that we're going to propose in February is to remove the strategy and not replace it. And and the reasoning behind that is is really kind of then leads me into the 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 other topic I want to discuss or just kind of quickly touch upon. But if we think about the portfolio now as a whole, we have roughly seventy percent allocated to equities, right? So seventy percent of the portfolio is intended to kind of earn that seven point nine percent, seven plus percent, you know, returns via growth primarily. And we have this other thirty percent, you know, twenty percent targeted to alternative credit, the other ten percent to real estate or real assets. That's, you know, where returns are primarily generated via income. Now with Brandywine, you know, the primary reason we're we're looking to remove that strategy moving forward and and not replace it is primarily due to the the opportunity set itself and and kind of the returns you can expect from that, looking forward. Your role yield of that global sovereign credit opportunity set is below two percent right now. So that means kind of any dollar you invest, you could expect to earn kind of two percent in income. That means if you're hoping to earn seven percent returns in that space, you're really depending a lot on currency movements, which are just inherently unpredictable. So it's a real tall ask, in our opinion, to expect seven percent returns from that global sovereign credit opportunity set. So what we're what we're going to be looking to do and discuss with the committee in more detail in in February is viewing the alternative credit in real assets piece as kind of one broad income sleeve. So a kind of a thirty percent income sleeve as opposed to twenty percent dedicated to alternative credit, ten percent dedicated to to real assets. And in practice, what that will allow us to do, right, is in cases like sovereign credit, where the opportunity set is just not that attractive on a forward looking basis, to take to take those proceeds and invest in in income generating ideas that are expected to to earn our our return targets for the portfolio. So we will be bringing that proposal to the committee in February alongside some new ideas that we have particularly within the real asset space that we think will are appropriate for the portfolio on a forward looking basis. But just wanted to kind of mention that at a high level. So the committee can expect it to to be discussed in more detail in February. Any questions or concerns on that?
Yeah, Zach, I got a question for you and Cole. Did we execute any sales, William? But from our our last meeting, we talked about if there was a dip in the market to
Yeah, so the what?
Okay, that was the only question I had.
Okay, that's all I had, Cole.
Great. Yeah, that's that. That concludes our remarks. One last call for questions, I guess.
I didn't hear the last round of of what the question was and what the answer was regarding sale of equities or sale of positions in the last.
I believe the the answer was we did not hit the the threshold, the dip, and didn't execute any.
Excellent. Thank you.
It was actually, we were going to, if we, if the markets were down a certain percent, then we were actually going to advance the investments. So we're going to make investments, not sell anything, but the markets did not reach the point to to cause that to happen.
So for this special meeting, I wanted to ask the other board members. I don't know, do we want the consultant present or or do we just want to ask for maybe the December thirty first, twenty twenty report to be present? I'm open for either.
So my understanding was that was to be a board only meeting, just to discuss certain certain topics the board wanted to talk about. I do not believe that in January, the December thirty first report will be available. So that can be discussed in in February if it's available at that time. Cole, does that sound correct?
That's right. We can, we can provide a November update to you all for the January meeting. Just, you know, the paper copy.
That's fine, November.
Perfect. All right, appreciate it. Okay, any other questions for Willis Towers Watson? Seeing none, hearing none?
All right, well, thank you all. Happy holidays and happy new year.
Have a Merry Christmas and all that, yeah. All right, moving along. Next on the agenda was the discussion on independent administrator. I know I had requested this a couple of months ago with our unexpected loss of Brian. The idea here was, I know William and Brian work hard on both the general plan and this plan. I haven't heard any successor ideas. And as a trustee and a member, I'm concerned with successor. You know, our plans down the road, if something were to happen to William, like I said, Lee wanted to leave in a couple of weeks. I don't know where we would be running these plans. I'm not sure. I I have limited information on the independent administrators. I heard Bob speak quite a bit about it. I think hiring any one person would probably be more than it's worth when they have firms that can do this. And we've budgeted from what I've heard, I don't know if it's still accurate, but the annual cost isn't much more than what we budget for staff or for Brian's position, I believe. So I don't believe there would be a big impact to the plan. And in the event, we have some staff leaving the city. I think maybe it would it would help with a little more consistency in a transition. Because like I was trying to bring up, Brian left or William, sorry, William left right now. Maybe a few months, as far as I know. With little to no experience, I'm imagining. I don't know what happens behind all the closed doors. So I just wanted to have the discussion and see if we maybe, at at the very least, get some information on it, request some information. But I'll ask the rest. You go ahead. Steve, you ready? What do you got?
Ms. Ramos is, was, at least in the roll call. We could certainly ask for them to, you know, kind of let us know what their plans for replacement are.
I can tell you what the plans are.
Oh, William's right here, by the way. Accidentally, sorry about that.
Advising the position. Hopefully, by the beginning of the year, we've started the paperwork on it. And so we are replacing, you know, we are hiring someone for that position. But, you know, that's that's a separate issue from what the board wants to talk about. If you want to talk about a third party administrator. I think the first thing you need to do is identify exactly what responsibility you would want that administrator to have. Because there are some tasks that the city staff, you know, there there are probably six or eight other city staff that are involved in administering this pension plan and and small percentages of their pay are are allocated as expenses to the plan. You have people in payroll, you have people in risk management, people in HR, people in accounting. So if you hire a third party administrator, are you hiring someone just to schedule meetings and take minutes? Or are you hiring someone who you think you want to come in and take over processing retiree payments? And the administration of the share plan and the drop plan and 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 all this other stuff. So, you know, there's a big difference between those different types of levels of service. And I think the board needs to, you know, identify how they want to do that.
Actually, yeah, I totally agree, William. And that's that's why I wanted to have the discussion. I was, my intentions weren't to replace city staff. It was more if if it's what's the word I'm looking for? It's cost effective, you know, just to ensure that we have someone in it. And it wasn't just to schedule meetings. And let the overall manage to make sure things were getting done. In the event, we had an unexpected loss again. But go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, that that's actually, that's what I was going to ask was just, how are we going to define what we're looking for? There's probably ministerial duties that that you're, you want to ship them to, you want the pension checks coming from a third party, those type of things.
Right.
Neutral on it. I try, at least I'll try to remain neutral on it, obviously. You know, it could be as much as an external administrator for a person going through the retiring process. I mean, there's, there's a lot of layers to what staff does now. But but defining what we're looking for, I think, is an important, you know, very important, quite frankly.
I was assuming, you know, if if we reached out for a little information, I've heard that was who's our actuary foster? I heard they have a firm, a firm that handles administration and there's several others that I've heard. I was kind of curious to see for their fee, annual fee, what what they entail, what they handle. I'm sure the contracts vary per plan, but I like I said, I'm as a member, I'm concerned about the and and the trustee, I'm concerned about consistency and if you know, like I think William said, we're looking at hiring someone.
So I can jump in. This is Cynthia Ramos, Finance Director. We are currently filling the vacancy. We have advertised. This comeback. There is succession planning that occurs at this level, I think, because it was unexpected.
I'm sorry, Cindy, that was a little garbled. I didn't get.
Yeah.
Ninety percent.
It wasn't coming across here either. And welcome aboard, Ms. Ramos.
I'll, I'll, I'll try to remember everything that I already said, but we are, we are in process of filling the vacancy.
Still garbled.
It must be my internet connection here in the city. So I'll talk very slowly to give the internet some time to catch up. So we are waiting, we are currently in process. It was an unexpected vacancy. So this has highlighted to us the need for stronger succession planning within.
Yes.
And that is on our radar. So I don't want you all to think. Not. What I will caution you with is the plans that I have been involved with at other municipalities, usually when you get your own administrator. It is for that administrator to process all of the functions. So I I sort of just like to for you all to think. To make sure that if there was an unexpected loss. Yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off there. We, I don't think we're getting more than thirty percent.
I did hear a word succession planning. Did I not hear that? That is a good thing. That is a very good thing.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it to Steve here and see what.
So, you know. Losing Brian was was bad for both plans and and certainly in the short run. So is our concern from it, I mean, succession planning, as you know, Eugene, is not what I think this organization has ever been really great at. So so if if it is someone that works directly for the board that kind of is doing independent management check that like Brian was was doing, you know, just so, you know, it's kind of a look at a check on a Willis, Willis, quite frankly. I mean, that's one thing versus top to bottom. So I just, I don't, I don't know what what the the other members of the board feel. And I know, I mean, Hewitt has a whole division that does define pension administration. I mean, I stole an employee from them once upon a time. Not stole, she freely came, offered acceptance considerations. So so they're there. And I know they do good jobs because many plans use those and not just in the government sector. I mean, there's still old, I'd say, traditional pension plans that are still out there. And most, and a lot of those are administered externally. I just don't know what the what 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 problem are we trying to solve, Eugene? I mean, I mean, not even problem. How are we trying to shore up our ability to act as sound fiduciaries for the members? Because for me, that's the single most important thing we do as trustees.
I think it's something where it's a, it's possible of a third party. Third party entity that has nothing to do with either the police department nor the city of Gainesville, although that's what the trustees are for. I think Harvey brings a lot to us. But there's what's that? And Walt.
Thank you.
And and they bring a lot to us. And I think, I don't, I think the the part is, you know, the thing about Brian is he he offered, again, I don't even think we could replace Brian. That's the, that's the, I think we're looking for a Brian. But how could we find him or her? That's the dilemma. Someone who represents or that we feel represents both sides. I mean, the the city wants to be represented, the members want to be represented and and then we have someone that we can go. And then we have someone that we can go, hey, um, is this, does this sound right?
So, um. I think anybody that works with this plan, whether they're a city employee or an independent, their primary. Objective should be to protect the assets of the plan that pay the benefits to the members, so. Um, but from, from a many of the other administrative thing, I want somebody that's basically. Neutral, you know, they're not, they're not, uh, you know, cause they they should be. Their role should be perfunctory in the in the administration of the plan, um, versus. The management of the managers or the consultants or all that kind of, I see how this is too. And I, I would suspect that anybody that is. Work their weight and and even just water, um, understands that when you take on a position that. Is involved with, uh, you know, public funds. That you need to act in the best interest of those those folks who benefit from those public funds. I mean, there were, there were people before Brian, there are people before William, there are people before me, quite frankly. And, um, I don't think any of them approached. Given the direction, it any differently. I mean, I I just think what you're. I mean, Brian was very unique in the manner at which he approached it. I mean, I I I. Um, you know, so, so I, I I I'd love to find another Brian. You know, good luck.
And I I just want to reiterate before Ms. Ramos says the for, uh, yeah, my intentions are, it was. I'm I'm concerned with consistency. And our unexpected loss was kind of an eye opener. And, you know, I'm I'm guess William's really working, working a lot harder now. And, uh, but then I thought about, well, what if, what if William left in two weeks? Where where would we be? Um, we'd be four months behind, I imagine.
Well, let me ask the question. I was gonna, let me ask the question of what the perception is, because I don't really have one either. So what is quote not getting done unquote? That was getting done before Brian passed.
Okay, uh, so. I don't think there's any perception that not anything's not getting done, um. But knowing that William and Brian both worked on both these plans and basically full time, uh. I guess the concern and my concern as a member was. You know, is is one person enough to handle that? And I and like I said, more in my opinion, I was more concerned with what if William decided to leave? You know, and then we'd be at least four or six months behind. I imagine. But Ms. Ramos, go ahead.
Hi, Cynthia Ramos, Finance Director. So I I think I will start by saying that, um, Brian's passing was very unexpected and it is going to be a huge loss and I don't want to diminish that in any way. Um, and I think that what we will need to do is. Um, as we fill the the vacancy and what else was coming across garbage upstairs, but we are, uh, filling the position. We are looking at what that best, what the structure will look like in the best way going forward. Um, I don't think William is going anywhere, um, and he'll correct me if I'm wrong after this meeting, I'm sure. Um, so I think the goal here is to just get an understanding of what you all are looking for. Uh, what concerns you have, how can we address them internally? And if there is still dissatisfaction with that going forward. Take a look at what you want to do with a third party administrator, um. From the municipalities that I've worked at previously, usually when a third party administrator is brought in, they take on the full function of. Of managing the plan, so you all would have to think about what that cost would look like. It's not inexpensive. So, um, I will say that, um, so it's it's definitely not going to be at the cost of the services that the city is providing now for the plan. I would venture to guess it would be higher than that. And so something for you all to think about and, um, I think those were all the questions that you all asked while I was running down here. Is there anything else you want me to address while I'm up here?
No, but it's reassuring to see you here, Ms. Ramos, and to hear your delivery. Uh, look, I I have just a couple of things I might add. You know, Brian had gone to working at a part time position. And, you know, part of that was because of his health and. A lot of what he focused on was talking to the investment managers and looking at their portfolios and and that sort of thing. And. You know, that was fine and that was great. I I will say that. The investment managers. I I'm pretty sure that they weren't adjusting their portfolios based on their discussions with Brian. So. If if you talk about replacing someone who's going to, you know, focus on the investments and looking at those things. Um, you're really almost talking about an outsourced, um, investment officer type position. And that's fine, again, if you if you want to talk about doing that, but. Really, that's what we have the consultants for. And, you know, right now I've taken on some of Brian's responsibilities. And I haven't, you know, I allowed him to focus on the investments because that's what he really enjoyed doing. Now, I don't mind doing that. And as soon as we have another person hired, we're hiring actually a full time position to replace, you know, the the position. That was halftime. So we should have, you know, plenty of people to cover what needs to be done. But if there are, again, as Cynthia said, if there are specific. Issues that you guys think aren't being covered or want to talk about, then, you know, we're we're certainly happy to discuss it. Yeah, good. Thank you. That. That's what I expected to hear as an answer from from William. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman. I'm trying to ramble on. I've had both ends of this. I was an actuary administrator for six months in a plan that I was chairman of. And fortunately, I had a great staff that saved me. There was so much here and I'm not sure of all the mechanics here, like when someone, uh, leaves, does the actuary figure out their calculation? Or is the city figuring out their calculation? There's all kinds of things in there. Who does all the regulatory? One seventy-five, one eighty-five, two twelve. Who does the summary plan descriptions? Are they done timely? And, uh, there's just, there's probably a laundry list of about twenty things that you have to sign all these responsibilities to somebody. I think. As far as the city comes, the financial part. They're the most cost effective and efficient because they're already doing it. Now, as far as administrative things, who does minutes and stuff like that? The other side of it, I was a trustee on a small city. That we had a part time administrator. And she was shared with two other boards. And she knew all the Florida statutes. She did basically place, because that's what the board was on. Uh, it's just, it's a very complicated issue and there's probably twenty-five, thirty things that could fall through the cracks that. And they were supposed to do. And that's what you don't want. It has to be very looked at very carefully. And all the duties assigned properly. So nothing does fall, especially when it comes to after going through the, the state holding up the money. The state's always looking for reasons to hold up your money for one reason or the other. Two twelve, you're not complying with something, they want to, they want to come after you there or the one seventy-five, one eighty-five that you saw. Which was, in my opinion, was bogus. There was no reason whatsoever to do that when they're doing the same thing, but that's all settled now. That's that's just my two cents on it.
I miss room sixteen, by the way, you all. I I don't mind telling you that. Cost is a component, um, but to me is, uh. What incremental value does the member get out of a a change in 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 how we administer the plan? Um, and, you know. Even if it is the expert or an independent investment officer that's going to. Provide some guidance to to the board, you know, I do want to remind us, we already essentially delegated. Investing, we we went into that delegated investment, you know, so that. That Willis Towers can have some leeway in moving from managers to managers as opposed to, do you guys remember last time we changed the manager? I think it took six months. At least, didn't it, William?
It takes a while, but usually it's because of contract negotiations and and that still occurs. I mean, you know, Bob still has to. Negotiate the contracts with new managers. But, um. You know, we save a few months by not having to go through a selection process necessarily by just accepting what Willis Towers Watson recommends. With with some evaluation and and we still do that and we'll continue to do that.
So, okay. But if if a change in the practice is going to provide value to the members. I mean, it's worth considering. If it is to make us feel more comfortable that we're doing our fiduciary thing, to me is is that how much. What is the cost of that? I feel good about what I'm doing for the members. I mean, I'm a city appointee, but I don't want you all to think that because I'm a city appointee, I don't. My number one priority is the fiduciary responsibility to the member more than worrying about what it costs the city from decisions made up here. Um, because ultimately, that is. The role you accept when you say I want to be a trustee. It's it's your 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 trustee to the members as much as the plan, so. I I if if we could hash out what we're looking for, I mean, Eugene, I don't mind. This is, you know, you you brought it up. You wanna, if you want to kind of just. Give it, give an outline or something that we can talk about on the twenty-seventh. So so, because I I suspect that's one of the issues that. As a board, we. We probably need to, you know. Decide one way or the other. I I don't know all the issues of the that are coming on the twenty-seventh, so. But it to me, it'd be nice to be talking about a proposal versus just a conceptual thing. It's just the way I work, Eugene. So, thanks.
Well, if if I may, Eugene, I think at my recollection, and it's only a recollection. Of the reason for having the twenty-seventh meeting came about with Harvey suggesting it as a new member. I I think, I could be wrong, that that it might help as a sort of a of an orientation process for all of us. As a body, because once you have one new member, you have an entire new board, essentially. But that's my recollection of the motivation for the twenty-seventh meeting.
Yeah, I believe tha- that's mine as well. Well. Um, and Steve, yeah, I I like I said, I wanted to bring up the independent administrator. I'm not interested in making things more difficult. I'm I'm glad to hear the city is replacing Brian or hiring.
If I can interrupt.
I'm sorry.
If I can interrupt, we could, we're replacing the position. I don't think we could ever.
That's what I meant, I'm sorry.
So I just want to be respectful of it.
And listening to, uh, Mr. Lewis, you know. I guess he's been on some plans where there was, I guess, having the independent administrators could be. A lot of finger pointing. I could see that and I definitely don't want to waste any planned money on stuff we're already doing. Um, I have no problem. I'm not, I didn't necessarily. Uh, have a motion and 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 I, uh. Really just wanted to discuss and see where we're at. So we can move, you know, and we have a special meeting in January. We can talk a little bit more then and see how the hiring's gone and and everything else.
Wha- what I might propose is that for the January meeting, you know, going back to what, uh. Trustee Lewis had said concerning the different responsibilities and things related to the plan administration. I could put together an outline. And, you know, just informally, those responsibilities, as I said before, they're spread across different departments within the city. Um, risk management is responsible for the summary plan descriptions. They're responsible for meeting with retirees and giving them benefit calculations and things like that. I'm responsible for other things having to do with actuarial evaluations. Providing the calculation or the data and things like that to the actuaries and submitting the annual report to the state. But I can outline all of that. Just to give the board members, uh. A degree of of comfort and and who's handling what. And, you know, maybe from there, if there are concerns that you continue to have, we can talk about them in in January. And in addition, I I think the January meeting was partially to talk about the investments. I think that. Uh, Harvey had had some some questions about the alt credit investments. And, you know, I've had concerns about them. Really for a year or more, but. You know, I think we went into this. Thinking that we would give them a chance to see how they performed. I haven't been pleased with the way they performed this year. Uh, in a down market and then in an up market. You know, the thing with equities is you may, you they may suffer, they may correct in the down market. But more often than not, they come right back. And we're not really seeing that in these alt credit strategies. But again, we can have that discussion. Harvey, I don't want to speak for you. I think that was part of what you indicated, right?
Yeah, I think that, um, one of the things was. I want to learn what country I'm in and also like you pointed out, William, I I have some questions just about the way. WTW operates. It seems like. They're crossing the line in my mind anyway into. From a manager, from a overall manager force here to actually, uh, money manager making the recommendations. And I think that if you're an executive or special session, whatever you want to call it, you can speak much more frankly and open. Without the managers being looking on your over your shoulder or something. And that was just my opinion, wouldn't say something special where I could learn more about the board itself. How it's structured and also we can talk honestly and openly about the managers we have now. Cause it doesn't hurt to reevaluate managers every year or two.
Yeah, I actually love Harvey's idea because if you. From the from the absence of consulting, because they're going to, I immediately want to come to the defense of of of. That portfolio thing and it's just really just philosophically, is this a place we want to be is a different than difference and so. So, so the twenty-seventh's good. I just want to let Harvey know. We calculate the benefit. It's based on a calculator developed by our actuary and the final goes to them for for verification that it that it. That it's correct of that. So, no, it's not this. It's it's a, but it's not, I didn't know you did not know the process. I wish someone would have noticed. No, we can, we can have those folks reach out to you. And give you some time.
Steve, I think that's the reason Harvey may have brought up the orientation suggestion and I might have made it myself had I known. As much as I know now, which is not very much.
Yeah, I I tend to forget that I've been around the plan for thirty years and it's, it's not just, it's it's administration, so I take. And I think these two over here also know, just based by having. Their members go through all that they can, they have a better understanding of the administrative process than than. Though than the two who don't come largely attached to the organization. So, sorry about that.
Uh, just to, I have a question. So. What is the work experience requirement for this position that you're opening up?
William, do you have the, could you fill out the position description?
So, I mean, the the work experience, you know, is we're going to request people who have investment experience, professional investment experience. A- as well as finance experience, you know, um, probably a degree in finance is going to be required, that sort of thing. Some of the, some of those preferences have, you have to be flexible on because you can't rely, you know, you can't. Be certain that you're going to get an applicant pool that's going to include everything you're looking for. So we have some flexibility there, but we are looking for someone who's got. Investment pension experience, investment experience and and the ability to do finance, work in spreadsheets, work in Microsoft Access. Work with the databases that the city uses for actuary evaluations. So, I mean, we're, it's a senior level analyst that we're hiring, so, you know, it's a, it's a professional position.
Okay.
And if there are specific. Areas that you all would like someone to have experience in, then let us know and we'll make sure that we ask that or we try to fulfill it as much as possible. I think it's been said many times today that Brian was very unique, right? And the experience that he brought over to the plan and I I think that. Expecting to fill someone that checks off all those boxes is is probably not likely. But we're going to do our best to get the best candidate in here to give you the support that you all need.
And because the pension board does play a part of that, uh, salary, we're at least flexible in the amount based on what experience you can bring to us.
Right.
And I I would add, just adding interpersonal skills, interpersonal.
And I, I would add, just adding interpersonal skills, interpersonal communication skills, because they're gonna be addressing questions that some of us have sometimes difficulty, uh, the questions that we have, we have difficulty of coming up with the words to ask what we intend to ask. And so somebody who can really communicate well and help help the board do its job.
Understood.
Do we know when this is, uh, plan to be advertised? Ballpark?
It should be advertised in January.
All right. Is there any, any other discussion on the topic?
It's usually advertised for about two weeks. So then two weeks of advertisement, maybe two weeks, two to three weeks of interview time. And then give it a week or two after that for an offer, an acceptance. A person probably has to give notice if they're not currently working. If they are currently working somewhere. So I would say about maybe six, eight weeks from the day that we post. If not faster than that if we can.
I'm just gonna, yeah, two weeks is a very short window to advertise a position that has that level of, you know.
Right, we were a little bit on the fence about advertising it during the holiday season as well.
No, 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 I get that, Cynthia. I would just.
Want us to do a longer advertisement?
So, I mean, think about it, you're, I, I just went through an analyst thing. I didn't find anybody that had defined benefit experience. Uh, I mean, that's in five different times I've filled that position. Only one time did I have somebody who actually had worked in a defined benefit structure before. So, I would, my, this is just Steve's thought. It's your hire, Cindy, and I, and I, I want to know.
I'm very much open to feedback, so.
I sus- I suspect the pool is better, though, the longer you let, you know, the longer, you know, longer the chums in the water, the, the better the fishing is. So, so I that seems like a short window for such a technical position. Uh, maybe I'm wrong. But I do understand why you're not advertising during the holidays, okay?
Alternatively, you could advertise it sooner and leave it open longer and just do it through the holiday season. So it's, we can, we can look into this and, and circle back with you and give you an update over electronic communication if that works.
May I ask, are you restricted by human resources, uh, policies, rules, past precedents?
No.
Good.
So we, we, we can, I'll look, I'll, I'll circle back with you all with, I'll go, go review that with HR and see what they recommend. And if we do change the timeline a little bit, I will circle back with you over email and let you all know.
I don't get the impression, I'll stand corrected, that we have an immediate and imminent need to fill this within three weeks, six weeks. It, it would be nice to do that, but the better, a better option would be to have a broader pool to, to look at.
Yes, we've done a good job of spreading the work that Brian was doing among staff that's already here, so that nothing falls through the cracks. So ideally, the quicker someone can be on board, the better for all of us. But, uh, we also don't want to rush that process and not bring the right person in. So we're sort of trying to balance those two.
Sure. Yeah, I, I think that this is where I think the board's needs and your needs align. My, my own thought is rather, I'd rather err on the side of, of better over faster, you know, it's just. But you can, you can do an open, talk to it, you can do an open to fill, so you can start looking at the pool and, and screen the pool at the same time still, you know, have a, not close it out, so you have to re-advertise if you don't find anybody. So there's, there's a number of, of strategies that you can deploy that, that thing meets our needs to ensure that some things that you're doing, that you're gonna, you're gonna select the right person. I, I don't doubt that. Um, but, but I do think you'll be surprised at how sometimes long it takes to get the right person to notice it's available, so.
And I would agree that we need to, you know, at least extend it to the, to a four-week period. But, uh, I, I have found in our experience that once we do find the right candidate, they make a job offer, yet they've already taken a job somewhere else because we took so long to pick them up.
Right, and the time is not driven by the job requirements, right? So we can't do an open until filled, like, recommended, and we can just review applications as they come in and bring in the right, the people that we feel would be a right candidate in for an interview and evaluate as we go.
Uh, I'm just curious as to, to waiting the, the manager part of it as compared to the administrative part, because we, it seems like if we're looking for someone who oversees the manager, we need a new manager. Because we're not getting what we're paying for.
Harvey, um, I'm not sure you're aware of the, the, the sort of the structure, the relationship we have with Willis Towers Watson. Couple of years ago, we went through a process of, um, engaging them to provide what we call delegated investment services, which is sort of a higher level of service in which they provide access to managers that we might not normally have access to. And they also negotiate reduced fees supposedly. So, I mean, as far as you manage, managing the investment managers, that was part of what Brian did. Uh, I mean, I did that, I do that as well. But again, you, you, when you say manage the managers, I'm not sure I know what you're talking about because I don't, I don't care if you speak to a manager every day and you're following a stock or two in their portfolio that you like or don't like. These guys have dozens of Ivy League, you know, highly educated analysts and portfolio managers on their staff. So I don't think that they're very often gonna make a change in their portfolio based on what Brian or I thought. They might, they'll be happy to talk about it, but they're not gonna change their portfolio based on discussions with, with a client. I don't know if that's what you're talking about doing, but I'm not sure that you're, you know, that that's something that's possible. And if you're talking about just someone to stay in communication with managers and decide whether you think a manager should stay with the plan or not, we, we do that. We continue to do that. I mean, that's what the performance reports are all about. But, you know, um, again, I'm, I'm not exactly sure, but maybe we can have a continued discussion in January about it.
Or you can tell us, think about the things that concern you about the, the managers, and then we can try to address those concerns at your next meeting. So it, to me, it sounds like there's some, some dissatisfaction. So I want to sort of pinpoint that down so that we can better provide the service to you all, and we don't have to do that today. But at one point, I think I do want to get to the crux of that.
Since I brought it up, I'll, I'll try to apply to that. I did not say or mention there was dissatisfaction. I believe I was just concerned. Because we know, we know how hard some of the people work for this plan and its members and, and the concern, and it's been throughout the entire city that we've seen a lot of, uh, recycling, sorry, what's the, what's the word I'm looking for? Turnover, there you go. There's been a lot of turnover and, um, our concern is finding the experienced people. Like Steve said, it's harder, it's hard to get people with experience. Go ahead, Steve.
So, um, I guess if we're gonna, if, if we're gonna look at something, here's what I thought Brian and William do very well, and, and I see it probably more than you all do. Is that if Brian or William is reaching out to a manager, they're seeing something, they just want to understand this, this inclusion doesn't seem to be consistent with your selection style or your, your formulaic approach or your, you know. And it, it was always, to me, it always added value when that manager was there and one of them said, yeah, but in this particular case, you know, it doesn't, you know, and, and I would like that type of person that, that isn't saying particular picks, but if there's something in there, he goes, man, I listened, I read all your stuff about how you go about your process and please explain to me how this, you know, um, I, I always felt comfortable knowing that there was that type of a just a kind of check and balance on, on the managers, not necessarily managing it, but these are the investment professionals that are, that are hired in Willis Towers Watson also. Um, I liked under, to at least be told that this is really not in our, in our system, but this one seems to be an off-the-board type thing and doesn't happen very often. But boy, when it does, it's nice to know it. I think that's one of the value-added things that, that we, we've received over the years. But I, I don't, I don't believe I've ever heard Eugene say anything about, about, about the service that it was, or actually any member of this board from the finance staff, so. So I just also want to say, I don't think that Eugene's intent by bringing it up. So, at least I never heard him. He complains to me all the time on a number of things. That isn't one of them.
I think it's pretty much what you said. It's, it's, we're looking for someone who's not just yes, 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 and when everyone agrees, that raises eyebrows of, wait a minute, are we going down the wrong, wrong path here? You know, if someone disagrees with William, and William disagrees with that, that's great. I like to have those healthy conversations.
Furthermore, in the January meeting, next item on the agenda, is there any new business? Hearing none, seeing none. We had a schedule for twenty twenty-one. Is there any dates anyone has, uh, any major conflicts with? Because I don't think we're, we have to do the fourth Wednesday. Let me just try to do the third or fourth Wednesday of the month.
Yeah, with the, with the amount of lead time that we get on this, I mean, I didn't see anything that conflicted. I guess, I don't know who's gonna answer this, but at some point, if, if we're gonna be able to maintain the physical forum and then other folks being able to, you know, virtually participate going forward, I can see no date that I can accommodate that, okay? So.
I would only add one thing about the, the schedule. I just sort of pulled it forward from last year and, and put it on the respective dates for twenty twenty-one.
Right.
The managers that are listed for the specific dates, those were just, again, based on last year's schedule of managers and in discussions with Willis Towers Watson. They thought that it would, might make sense to have all, some alt-credit managers, uh, some of the ones that I'm concerned about come earlier in the year. So what I would suggest is that, you know, the managers are gonna be flexible and I'll work with Willis Towers Watson to specify ahead of time which managers are gonna show up when. And, you know, some of that will depend on what happens in January at the meeting, whether the board decides, you know, that they, you know, you've got a lot of concerns with specific alt-credit managers or not. Um, and, and how we handle that, but, um, I would just say the dates, you know, if, if the board approves the dates, that would be great, but leave flexibility on the managers.
Yep, that's a good idea, William.
Perfect. Any other discussion about the, uh, twenty twenty-one?
Do you need a motion to approve the date?
That's what I was trying to recall. I don't think.
When in doubt, make a motion. I so moved.
Okay, well, there's a motion to, and a second to adopt the, uh, proposed schedule for twenty twenty-one. Any other discussion under the matter? No, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. We have our dates. All right, information on public. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, seeing none. We have member comment.
It was a good meeting today. Thank you. You guys, you did an excellent job of managing the meeting.
You all, barely holding on.
I just want, I just want to wish my fellow trustees and the staff out there Merry Christmas and Prosperous New Year. Let's hope twenty twenty was nice. A whole lot different than twenty twenty. I mean, in a good way, okay? I don't want anybody to suggest that it could get worse.
So, when is risk management handing out the vaccine?
So.
Yeah, I pray we're not, yeah, not saying, uttering the words that I wish it was twenty twenty again.
Yeah, um, that's a great question. Yeah, so we don't even know. We hadn't even heard, to my, to my understanding, is what is the next tranter vexed vaccinated on the, on the hierarchy besides, uh, healthcare, I mean, healthcare workers and nursing homes, I mean, assisted living. Yeah, so.
Police and fire pension board members, I think is maybe in July.
So, so while I think that you, you will be in the, uh, the ages.
That's right. I'm a high-risk group. I, I got the age and the suppressed immunity, so I, I'm going over to stand in line right now.
Uh, just for clarification of the next meeting dates, we ask, it will be January twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh. Uh, does anyone know will we be required to do it in here, I guess, right, and, and on record?
And I should be available in person.
Uh, you know, for the minutes purposes, but they are not broadcast live like the city commission meeting or anything.
Perfect. All right, is, uh, there's no other business to discuss? A motion adjourned would be in order?
So moved.
Adjourn.
Perfect.
Second.
All right, it's been motion and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Merry Christmas. Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
Thank you, Eugene.